I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two items at the end of the evening. One is a brief executive session for some legal matters and then we will re-adjourn into a budget workshop. According to the attendance?
Counselor Hammond?
Here.
Counselor Hurley? Counselor Cocken?
Here.
Counselor Menusos?
Here.
Counselor Martino?
Here.
Counselor Rao?
Here.
Counselor Roberts is traveling. Deputy Mayor Berry?
Here.
And Mayor Montanari?
Here. Thank you.
Counselor Hurley will be here. He's just running late.
Our first item is Peter for Economic Development Report. Welcome, Peter.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilors, and Town Manager. I believe in your packet you did receive a copy of the May 2014 report, so without repeating everything, I'll just briefly mention the highlights. We have issued a building permit for the Correct Magnet School at 176 Cumberland Avenue. Just for your information, the value of that project based on the building permit submitted is $16 million, so they're making great progress up there and we look forward to seeing that project through the final permit processes. You have a list of seven or eight new businesses that have opened in the past few months, most notably Buffalo Wild Wings, an insurance agency, a couple of real estate firms, so if you have questions on that, let me know. We just issued a certificate of occupancy for the addition to the Hartford Hospital Medical Building at 1260 Silas Dean Highway. The project turned out very nicely. Let's see. You may have seen activity in the Gulfbrook Shops. Their building permit has been issued for at least a foundation for the Chips Restaurant in the Gulfbrook Shops. You may have also seen activity down at Comstock Ferry. They are working on their parking lot paving project and exterior gardens to exhibit some of the seeds that they actually sell there. We're talking to a couple of people about some new business activity. You may have also seen on Knott Street, AA Veterinary Clinic is putting a small addition on that building. Let's see. Planning and Zoning Commission has been relatively busy. We had a pre-application review meeting for a memory care facility called Lifestyles Unlimited, which is proposed for the Harris property at the end of Old Reservoir Road. They've not started the permit process, but they wanted to meet early on in the process with the Planning and Zoning Commission to get some feedback. You may have also seen in the Hartford Current that the Planning and Zoning Commission rejected the proposal to amend the zoning regulations for the licensing of medical marijuana dispensaries. That application had been submitted by a private party who was interested in a particular location here in town. Their state license did not get approved, so the commission felt at this point in time it was appropriate to deny that and further study the issue, so they will be meeting at some point in the future to discuss that further. In terms of economic development activity, we've issued a couple of facade funding projects. 20-30 Beaver Road is going to redo their exterior facade, so we've provided some assistance to that. The mixed juice building at the corner of Hartford Avenue and Main Street, we're providing some funding for that as well. If you did not see it, on May 14th, which is a Wednesday night, at the Weathersfield Country Club, the Chamber of Commerce is having their annual meeting and they're recognizing a number of town and community volunteers at that, so if you can make that, please do so. Tickets are still available for that. We did successfully file the three steep applications that you had previously authorized us to file. We did meet the deadline for that, so we are waiting for word on whether any of those projects are going to be funded by the state. There's a typo in your report. I think I had said March 15th is the opening date of the farmer's market. Obviously, that is May 15th, which is coming up very shortly. Let's see. Tourism Commission is working hard. They're redesigning their promotional rack card, which will be distributed in hotels and visitor centers throughout Connecticut. You may have also seen in your packet, they have designed a new monthly newsletter to keep visitors and residents informed of activities going on in Old Weathersfield. And then lastly, you may have also seen in your packet, a flyer that is promoting the weekend of May 24th and May 25th as Heritage Weekend. There are activities being partnered by the Historical Society, the Webb Dean Stevens Museum, and Comstock Ferry on that weekend, so it should be a... There's also a parade that weekend, so it should be a busy weekend in Old Weathersfield. That summarizes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Peter?
One quick question, Peter. I noticed that, you know, the foundation is going up on Chips. The parking areas, the site plan include the adjacent shopping center? I understood that maybe they purchased the neighboring property and then were going to join them.
The owner of Gulfbrook Shops has recently purchased the property to the south, which has the YMCA and the hardware store. He is going to be coming in at some point in the near future to interconnect the parking lot, so that both the shopping center and that business can share parking. There's a curb line there now, and there was recently boulders there to kind of block that, but he's going to interconnect those. He hasn't submitted that yet, but that is his plan, yes. Thank you.
Peter, there was something on here about redoing the mobile station. Is anything dramatic, or?
We've had some preliminary discussions with an interested party. He may be selling that site and having it redeveloped a little bit, so we'll see what happens with the plans. We've had some preliminary discussions with that.
How big a site is that?
It's a pretty small... It's actually... Most of the parking in the rear is owned by the utility company, and they're going to probably give that back to the utility company and just put it back into grass. So the property is, I think, less than a quarter of an acre. Relatively small site.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you. Have a good meeting.
We are not scheduled for any hearings, so we'll move into public comment. Anyone wishing to speak from the public this evening? Mike?
Mike Cuddygan, 49 West Look Road. What I'll speak about tonight is Agenda Item B6C, which is the acceptance of the minutes of the April 12th council meeting. Really concerned about this. I'm going to read for you... Well, let me start off by giving a brief description. The minutes list the persons attending, which are the council members, and about 15 or so of the department heads. Mike Turner, James Sutran, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Looks like all the department heads. I'm going to read to you the entire contents of the minutes. Meeting was called to order by Mayor Montanari at 8:15 a.m. Throughout the day, the different town departments appeared before the council to discuss their 2014-15 budgets. Meeting adjourned at 2:20 p.m. For six hours, they had meetings. This is what? There's nothing here. I'm sure there was substantive material discussed. I've been paying attention for maybe 20 years to what goes on. Typically, every year, around April after that budget public hearing, there are two or three or four special council meetings where all the department heads come to the meeting and basically justify their budgets, and the council members ask questions. Those minutes, which is a good thing, those meetings produce minutes, five to 10 pages of the detail of the main points that come up during those discussions, and they're all available over there in the town clerk's vault. Last year, something happened. Last year, there were no minutes at all. What happened was, and I spoke about this in May after it was over, the decision was made to have all those meetings in a subcommittee, Budget and Finance, I think was the name of it. The rules apparently are that there's no minutes for subcommittee meetings, so nothing was ever produced last year. After I discovered that, in May after it was all over, I got up and spoke about that. Several other people in the audience, and also a couple of the council members, spoke up about that also. And I think the general tenet of that was, what happened was wrong, it was going to be fixed. The next thing that happened was, last November, we had an election, and Republicans are not the majority anymore, Democrats are the majority, a change of command, meaning that the committees are run by different party members now. A couple of times during the winter, I called council members, I don't recall who, so I don't want to pin down somebody, and reminded them of what happened, that all the records of what happened went away last year. Or not went away, they never happened compared to the prior 20 years or so. And I was assured that was not going to happen again. Well, here we are. Nothing. I can't imagine why this could have been... There must have been something of substance discussed. So I'm urging you to reject these minutes and go back and produce proper minutes. Now, there was also B6E item. There was also an April 24th special meeting, again, to discuss more budget items. I can't say nothing was shown because there is something. Again, the council members are there, Board of Education members are there, and some staff members. It lasted for, from 7:05 p.m. to about two hours. This was basically discussing the public school budget, and Mr. Emmett, the Superintendent of Schools, was there. There are about three or four sentences in there. That's not enough. There must have been more there, or at least there's something. So the six-hour meeting, when absolutely nothing is in the minutes, has to be fixed. I think you should also fix the April 24th minutes also. Really concerned how this could have happened. It's up to the town council, the town manager, the town clerk to get this fixed and not let this happen again. Thanks.
Gus?
Gus Colantonio, 16 Morrison Avenue. Just some comments regarding the, I guess, the Weathersfield Life, some articles that I read. Connecticut is number seven for foreclosures in the country. Number seven. Out of 50 states, I think we're pretty high, a lot of foreclosures. As far as we're concerned, as far as I'm concerned, we're still in a recession. And let me quote now the article in Weathersfield Life. It says, "Budget proposals call for nearly 4% increase. Does not tell the whole story. The proposed town budget of $93 million represents a 3.97% tax increase, but what it does not tell you exactly that for two-thirds of the residents will have to pay an additional 10.73% property taxes. If you were lucky enough that your property did not go down in value, and even if fewer property did appreciate in value..." Again, let me quote that article. "The value of an average home in town prior to reevaluation was $187,000. Now it's $168,000. A drop of nearly $20,000." To make up for that, the town manager has proposed an increase in the mill rate from 33.46 to 37.05, an increase of 3.6%. This is a quote. To my knowledge, if the mill rate goes from 33.46 to 37.05, it's not an increase of 3.6%, but it's much more than that. The mayor's comment was, "My reaction is the starting number is a good number." I stated in the article, "The mill rate represents 10.73% increase, and this should not be unacceptable on the spot." How can you really increase the taxes on my property? Over 10%? Unless I'm... I don't understand something, I guess, you know, something goes wrong, anyway. 10.73%? And $6,000 in one year, it's going to be over $600 more. Where are we going to go next year? My social security was 1.5% increase. Let me make a few comments regarding the editorial. It is truly taxing time. But it all seems so frustrating when taxes go up, at least a little bit, every year. Yes. My property taxes have never gone down for the past 41 years that I lived in Weathersfield. 41 years, always went up. That should not come as a surprise. Costs for everything from water to electricity to gasoline keep rising. The same factors that affect home budget also affect school and town government budgets. I believe the residents do not mind paying for utility increases. The town cannot do much about it." And I agree with that. Municipal and school employees want decent salaries and benefits just like everyone else. Yes, I guess so. Yes, but why these employees have a better salaries, benefits, and yearly increases with no accountability whatsoever? Private workers do not have better salaries, nor better benefits, and no raises. In fact, when you consider the changes in healthcare insurance, many of the private workers have not had an increase for a few years. But yet, in town, every year, they get an increase. We could have fewer teachers. We could have few police officers on the street. We could have few people in public works. I do not believe that anyone wants this, but I have to ask, at a time when Connecticut, again, is number seven in foreclosures, the unemployment rate is still above 6%, why does any public employee need a salary and benefit increase? What are they doing more than last year that calls for an increase in pay and benefits? Contractual agreement. Who represents the taxpayer? The union knows that these jobs cannot be exported, so they do whatever they want to do. Or can they? Garbage collection was done by town employees many years ago. It was changed because they were not efficient. Why are teachers in private school paid less with better test results than their counterparts in public schools? One has to wonder, is anything done by government employees efficient? Thank you.
Thank you, Gus. Mr. Young?
Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. Our first speaker tonight spoke about some minutes that I'm aware of as well. I looked at those and was floored over for the period of time that you folks met with the Board of Education and had one sentence of what you have done, or two sentences of what you have done during that six and a half hours. It really shows how interested we are here at our town council and Board of Education to do something about holding our costs down. Actually, my impression, not even being there, is that you were probably all slapping each other on the backs, telling everybody, telling those few that were there, the board and the town, how happy you are and how you've snickered the taxpayers of Weathersfield. I'll bet for, out of that six hours, at least four hours, you did that. Because you don't have anything else to show. That's my opinion. Of course, when I go to the Board of Education meetings, I hear how hard they work. Constantly, how hard they work. And by reading those minutes and other minutes, it's like, what a bunch of bunk. What a bunch of bunk you folks put out. Can't you at least put out decent minutes? Next subject. I've talked more times than I want to admit about the idea of shared services. And I know we just went through this period of time with finance director at the Board of Ed not being... Being rehired, it was a long period of time when it was empty. Same here, on the town side. And you failed to combine those two services that are exact into one, one town side for board and the town. Yet, here in the Hartford Current, city schools to merge financial operations in the town of... Middletown of all places. It promises increased efficiency and transparency. I believe that for a fact. If you would have brought those together and had the finance director report directly to the town council, I believe you would get efficiency and transparency. Instead, what we're doing here is costing both the town side and the board side a lot of money to spend, and the taxpayer is the one who ends up getting beaten up because there is no efficiency here. And you had a great opportunity to do this, and you didn't do it. This article goes on to talk that your general ledger system at the board side was... You couldn't do a lot of things that they wanted it to do. On the town side, they couldn't do a lot of things, it had limitations. And they went out and bought, and they're getting munis, which is what we have here in town. And they think now they're going to be able to have some great savings. We have munis. We now have two directors, one on the board, one on the town side, and we're going to spend and spend and spend. When will the next cycle come, when we have this great opportunity that you folks just missed? We could have saved money and made the place more efficient and economic. We have today, the Mohegan report is that there's going to be more drop in income coming from Mohegan, those casinos. We're heading for more trouble. Even the city of Hartford is going to be having a lot of problems with their budgets, which will filter down to here because we'll end up picking up a lot of their students. And then, of course, the project, the projected surplus dries up up in Hartford. You know, they had this little... Where is it here? Little cartoon of Malloy and his... The $55 thing, I thought that was pretty cute to be in the newspaper, but this just went up in smoke as well. I was going to... I was already thinking how I was going to spend this $55. Lucky, I didn't do that. So here we are. We have another article in the Hartford Current that residents in state want out. But why? And there's a lot of reasons why people want to leave the state of Connecticut. From what the article talks about, is 49% said that they would flee their home state if they could. Of course, they got to first sell their house. That's a tough deal in the town of Weathersfield, and that's a tough deal in the state of Connecticut, at least up here in this region of Connecticut. And then we rank number six overall in the cost of living, according to the U.S. Bureau of Economic Analysis. And there's a whole host of reasons why people want to get out of here. And you can take your pick. Go back and read the article. I'm not going to go much further with it because it's not worth it. We're all dead as it is with the way things have been. Our taxes should be going, should have been going down over the last number of years with the recession, the way it was, but they didn't. And now, I don't know where we're going, but I'm sure they're not going to go down. And you're going to have more people, mean and ugly, wanting to get out of here. And then, of course, while all of this is going on, we have sounds of silence in the Hartford Current regarding 50 employees who lost their jobs working in the Ovation guitar business up in New Hartford. Firm seeks Chapter 11, Clear Edge Power. It just continues on and on. Clear Edge sends their workers home. I don't know how many we have here in town, but, you know, it just keeps going on the way you folks have been spending money. Whether it's Weathersfield, Newington, Glastonbury, there is no economy of savings here at all. And then we have these deadwoods that we're carrying. A lot of deadwood in this town, and we spoke about this over the last several meetings. We have properties that we supposedly own, that we have no use for, and we rent it out for $100 a year to some organization in town. We should give those properties back to where we got them from. We have no business owning properties that we do not use. I've said this more than once from this podium and other podiums in the town of Weathersfield. We have no business owning these properties if we don't use them, and we're not using any of these properties. We've given them away on 50-year leases, so someone else can enjoy the... Whatever rents, whatever kind of revenues they get, and we take care of all of their maintenance, with the exception of $3,000 in aggregate for different properties, which means we still are responsible for the maintenance, which the original thought was, we would get rid of that. Now, if we go back to the minutes, if we go back to the minutes of September 16, 2002, a long time ago, this issue was still on the table. This was hot and heavy. A lot of citizens were talking about, a number of citizens were talking, including myself, about we've got to do something with these properties, they're costing us money. And the same cast of characters who have the leases on those properties today were also involved back then with these same properties. And it's been nothing but, all along, the last 14 years, 13 years, whatever it's been, of costing us money. And what do we get for it? Some building down there, we say, oh, we own it. Hell, you go look on Vision Appraisal, whatever that number is for the Standish House, it doesn't say we own it. It says it's owned by the Weathersfield Historic Society. I told you this a month ago. It's still on there as of the last time I looked, which was only last week. So what kind of jokes are you pulling on these people, on everybody here in town? You keep spending? You have no desire to cut back on your spending? If you had a will or a backbone, you would snap those properties and give them back, take them away from those people that have them today, and give them back to the people that you got them from. And then, if they don't want them, sell them to the Historic Society. Let them become property owners like the rest of us. Let them take care of their own properties. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Anyone else wishing to speak? Dave?
Hello, David Krug, 149 Broad Street. I haven't been here for a while. Last time I was here was when Donna was mayor. But Paul's mayor now. I'm a Democrat, by the way. I came here to basically speak about education. You're going to talk about the budget, and I want to talk about how important education is. I know there are some speakers here who have spoke weeks upon weeks about wasting money on education, and our scores are hovering and not doing too well, but, you know, education is important. And I remember some of the meetings at the Board of Education where they talked about how our population in the schools are changing. There is an increased at-risk population in our schools, and that happens. We're very close to Hartford, and we have more students who need extra help, and that can affect our scores. And that's not an area you want to cut back on. If anything, that's an area you want to increase on, because if Weathersfield goes down in education, and right now, we're not going down, we're just kind of like Mr... Forgot his name. Right. We're hovering, but if we go down, people will not want to move into Weathersfield, and that will affect our town greatly. You know, no one wants to move into a... know, no, no one wants to move into a, to a, a town that, that is failing. And, um, so, so I urge you, please, do not cut back on any of the, uh, on the education budget. Now, um, the, the, my next comment is kind of trivial. I know some people mentioned, last speaker mentioned, um, about people leaving Connecticut. I, I saw the, uh, the, uh, the, um, the, on my Facebook, uh, who, who wants to leave Connecticut, or percentage want to leave Connecticut. Well, I know some people, I know some friends who, who wanted to leave Connecticut. And what happened? They ended up coming back to Connecticut. You know why? Because they, they left California, well, one of our friends left California, and, uh, he had no friends there. He had to form new friends, develop new friends, and, and in the end, he came back. So, so even though you might say, some people might want to leave Weathersfield, but I think, uh, the majority of people who live in Weathersfield like myself, you know, you, you form friends, you have family living around you, and, and you don't want to leave. I think that's why Weathersfield has, in our, I don't know if it's still, uh, uh, the same. We have the, um, oldest average population in the state, and it was like that a few years ago. Because people who live in Weathersfield, they stay in Weathersfield till they die because they, they don't want to leave. And, 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 and that was the, the statistic, uh, years ago. And I believe it's, uh, we, we have one of the older populations, and can I get, I think that's, that remains true. Because people who grew up in Weathersfield want to stay there, want to stay here because it's, it's a nice town to live in. And, and, um, I, I just hope you don't, uh, I know, I know there are some speakers, I haven't come here in a while and, uh, to argue against some of the other speakers. Some of the speakers speak against education, and I speak for education. And this is the first time in many weeks that I've come here to speak. But, uh, I, I, I think, I think it's important, you know. We, we don't want our schools to go downhill. And, um, I, I hope you don't do that. Thanks.
Thank you, David. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? George?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. George A. Rue, 956 Cloverdale Circle. Uh, let me change, change the subject slightly. Okay? Uh, we got a joke in our house when my wife comments about this gentleman from Morrison Avenue. I always say that's Morrison Avenue Gus. Today I'm going to speak as Cloverdale Circle, Cloverdale Pond George. So, uh, I don't have any formal notes. I just got a couple pictures that I do want to share. And I, unfortunately, I, I will share them with the chair, and he can distribute them. Uh, it goes back to the, uh, the first of April. I walked out, we had a big snowstorm on that day or the previous day, and I went out in my backyard with my great-grandson. And all of a sudden, I looked up my neighbor's, and there was this huge tree. And, and as a matter of fact, let me, let me, let me do it this way. Because I'm just going to make a little bit of a reference to these pictures. I'm sorry I don't have more, but maybe I can get them to you somehow on a computer. I, I'm not as good as a computer. I probably shouldn't. There was this huge tree lying on its side. And that little box that you see in the first picture shows you the height of the base of that tree. And I went out and I measured, and I got some references. And that tree was about 75 to 80 feet long. I mean, high. It was, it was long at that time because it was lying on the ground. Uh, and I thought to myself, holy Toledo, a potentially deadly source of injury. On private property, not necessarily the responsibility of the towns, but nevertheless deadly. And you've all probably read about a lady who was killed, I believe, in one of our state parks not too many months ago by a tree, and another incident where a child was severely injured by a falling tree in, uh, in, I believe it was in Manchester. Again, my memory's searching. So I, I started to think, boy, that's very interesting. And why was it interesting? Because it's in close proximity to this piece of property immediately to my west, a very, very neglected disgrace to the town of Weathersfield. So in any event, going to the second picture, around that same time, this pic, oh, incidentally, this activity, this tree caused this particular homeowner to take a look at some five trees on his property. And I spent over several, several thousand dollars getting these trees down because I didn't want them coming down on somebody. And what I spent probably represents a significantly larger proportion of percentage of my budget than does the 80-some thousand dollars that we don't have in our pockets because we can't afford it to correct this problem on, at the, at the pond. But that next tree, that next picture, that happens to be a town tree. That has come down in two pieces. Sometime back, it came down, and I went over and I spoke to some gentlemen from the, from the maintenance department who were there. We were looking and chatting about this thing that was hanging down. Well, this piece was new, and it came down around the same time as that other tree. And I thought, and that was big. That was a big hunk of tree. Again, it fell on the, on the north side of the creek, not necessarily on the side of the creek, on the side of the property where children and others may regret having a legitimate business to be. Okay? So I, I wanted to share that picture with you. And again, I've entitled it, "A Deadly Hazard." Now, when we have hazards around town, and I can remember an incident sometime back, a number of years back, where there were some trees overhanging Silas Dean Highway and the former, I believe, a former councilman, Tom Ray, came down and, you know, made a little fuss about it. And they were removed very quickly because there was, there was a significant liability exposure to the town. Not that liability exposure to the town worried our officials too much. My wife had a fall, had a fractured pelvis on town property. I was going to sue, she was going to sue, but I encouraged the two. But we finally gave up because there's always a way that the town can avert responsibility. They don't really, it's hard to get them to say, to hold somebody accountable. So we just said, ah, to heck with it. She recovered, and that was fine. This tree, again, a deadly, came down in two pieces, both of them, potentially very, very serious injury producing. And the next one, which I think is number three or five, again, is that same tree on the side from which it fell. And that tree probably, that stump that you're seeing was probably two, two and a half feet in diameter. And that house in the background happens to be 956 Cloverdale Circle, which kind of indicates that he's a neighbor of this, it's a neighbor of mine. I, you know, it's, you know, you're always interested in what your neighbor's doing or not doing. And I think sometimes we, our neighbors who don't do stuff have to be prodded, sometimes gently, sometimes softly, and sometimes perhaps more harshly. I don't know. But in any event, then we got the next picture, which is number four or five. That's really up close. And again, a very dangerous situation. And last, the last of the pictures was a stump, a sort of oak tree that was like about yay for many, 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 many years. It took a lot of struggle to get that thing to get taken down. And the purpose, why did I come tonight? Not to give anybody a hard time, but to call attention to the fact that when we as a community can spend thousands, I don't know how many thousands, and I, all I noticed down on us, on the, on the, on the Broad Street Green, there were one lot of new trees planted in that thing, in that spot lately. And they don't come for free either. So it seems to me that we have two views of what constitutes the proper maintenance of town open space. One down on the Broad Street Green, and the other one off in the corner somewhere, which is of equal import and should be of equal concern. From a hazardous perspective, probably of greater concern. So again, I share these pictures with you. I have many, many more. And I, I must say, I, I, I almost hesitated to come down because I had talked to the mayor and suggested that we come down and take a look. And what has, what my perception has been, hardly ever anybody has ever looked at that thing seriously. Hardly. My Tom, Mike Tom, uh, Mike Turner would come down occasionally. I saw Sally down there one time with a couple of people. She came and looked. I came, I saw her, but I didn't conquer. I left. Nothing happened. And when a crew showed up and was going to do something, they were significantly concerned about the precarious things that they would be working under. I believe they left and nothing happened. And there's a tree, this tree that is still standing here, is, 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 it can fall down. It can kill somebody. And there'd be no accountability. And what we will hear is, we've got to do something so this never happens again, a favorite, favorite quote of mine from anything that happens wrong in government. We've got to do something so it never happens again. My counsel is, do stuff before it happens. To me, it's the most logical thing to do. It's called preventive, preventive care or preventive maintenance, or call it whatever you, whatever you will. And I would like to suggest that, that as I look at, at an 80 or 90 million dollar budget, and I see $80,000 getting pushed out again and again and again, and my wife said to me just today, you've been down fighting to get that doggone thing cleaned up for longer than many of you have been in town. Maybe I shouldn't say you, because most of you, a few of you have been in town less than I have been fighting to get that pond straightened down. And I think it's, I personally think, as a taxpayer, you can't help but feel annoyed. You can't help but maybe feel even offended by either harsh words or inactivity. And I think it's time to take a look at making that thing go away or get fixed, have it become an asset to the community. And again, I, 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 I truly believe that the invitation that I extended to the mayor will be forthcoming. And I know he's busy and budgets don't, are high on the priority, so I haven't pressed it. But it provide, it provided me, I wanted to take the opportunity of sharing those things visually, as best as this amateur photographer can, with my elected officials. And with that, I thank you very kindly, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, George. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to council reports. Any council reports this evening? No reports? Quiet week?
Well, I did go to the Building Committee, uh, meeting last week, and there was a tour of the, uh, the high school. And it really is impressive to see what, as did Mike, by the way, um, impressive to see, and encouraging to see the progress, progress that's being made. And it seems things are on schedule. Uh, the new additions should all be done by, uh, the, the actual new construction should be in place by Thanksgiving. So, so all looks good in terms of the construction progress right now. And I think it was exciting to see the work that's being done there.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor? We'll move on to council comments. Council comments?
Yes, thank you. At, at some previous council meetings, I had mentioned that I was going to create a committee to look at the Deming Standish House situation. And I'm happy to announce tonight that I'm going to, I'm establishing this committee with some, with a great group of volunteers. And the, the charge, the purpose of this committee is simply to review the existing circumstances surrounding the lease of the, the Deming Standish House and to develop some potential solutions and alternatives to meet the committee's objectives. And, and those, those objectives are threefold, threefold at this point. First, maintaining funding for the Historic Society. Two, to preserve the structure. And three, to protect taxpayers. At the end of the committee, um, findings, the, the results will, the outcome will result in a, a report that will be generated and presented, uh, to the council, um, at, at some future council meeting. Uh, there's a great group of individuals that I'm, I'm going to, uh, tell you about tonight. They come from different backgrounds and, uh, different work experiences and different political parties. Other than myself chairing the committee, John Mullin, who is currently a member of the town council, the, the Town Capital Improvement Advisory Committee, uh, he's been in the property business for 20 to 30 years and brings, um, that property management experience to the committee. Paul Kopp will be the second member. Uh, and these are in no particular order. Um, he is the chairman of the Independence Party in town. Robert Gary, who is a, a resident, will also be a member of the committee. He is the current chair of the Historic District Commission and works at ING, right? Um, Helena Riley, she's an old Weathersfield resident, works at The Travelers, um, does some, some work with the Colonial Dames of America, who own the Webb Stevens Museum in town. Jennifer Wolf, she's an attorney and a former member of the Historic District Commission. Uh, and the last member is Claire Mead, who is an old Weathersfield resident as well, a former board member of the Historic Society, former chair of the Historic District Commission and the Library Board, a member of the Connecticut Trust for Historical Preservation, and a member of the Beautification Trust. Um, it's a, as you can see, it's a great group of volunteers who I believe will be very open-minded and objective. Otherwise, I wouldn't have invited them to the committee, and they wouldn't have accepted. Uh, and I think they're up for the task at hand for the betterment of the town. I would like to include the, uh, the town manager to sit on the committee, but I'm not sure how that would work. So I would maybe defer to, to you, Jeff, to maybe give us a...
I don't believe I, I would serve on that as a town official. I think it, this is not a council committee. Okay? I can provide information as I would to any resident on any topic the town has in its position.
Are there any alternatives?
I would like, yeah, well, if it's, um, through you, if it would be an ad hoc committee versus a, a standing committee or a council committee, um, would you be able to serve as a member from the town if it was a council committee?
Yes. If it was endorsed by the council?
Sure. Okay. Um, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, this committee that Staffy, Staffy had, um, assembled be a standing council committee.
Are you adding an agenda item, Mike, to the agenda?
Would that be?
I think you'd have to...
Open the agenda?
I think for probably Robert's rule of order, we'd have to entertain a motion to add an agenda item if you want to make a motion.
Okay.
To, so if it just proceeded, I think we, we have to do that.
Okay. I'd make a motion to open the agenda to include, uh, this committee that Staffy had previously mentioned.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
No, I, I think, uh, what I had said was, uh, that we make it a, a council committee so that, uh, somebody from, uh, the town could, uh, sit on it as staff, provide, um, assistance, guidance, and answers of any committee member who would be asking, uh, the town for information on the, the Deming Standish House.
Yeah, if I can, um, when you said a standing committee, so we'd have like infrastructure, finance, um, public works, whatever, and this would be like a, an additional committee? Like, we have, I think we have four, five, six committees. This would be a seventh or a sixth or whatever?
Well, I mean, I would leave it up to the, the council to decide whether or not a standing committee would be appropriate or just a, you know, a simple council committee. But as much, I would like to get as much... But as much, I would like to get as much input from the town as possible. So if it's somebody from the Department of Public Works to talk about the work that has gone on or will be going on at the Standish House, or if it would be, you know, somebody like Peter who would be discussing economic development, whether or not, you know, it's feasible for the town to own versus the town to lease out, or a private citizen to own, you know, I'd leave it up, or defer to the council, whether or not it would be a standing committee or just simply a council committee.
Aren't committees usually, council committees usually made up of council members?
Didn't we have a committee for the Wilkes Farm that was appointed by the council?
That was an ad hoc committee.
But still, they had the resources of the town if needed, right? And even if it didn't conform to that, I don't see what the difference is. We have a great group of people. That shouldn't really matter unless you don't trust this group of people.
I don't think that's the question. I guess the question is, what are we, what is it that you're forming? I didn't know what, I thought at one point you said council committee...
We'll call it the Deming-Standish House Committee. And a standing committee would be great, just like any other committee. If there's something to report, it would be reported on. If not, then there wouldn't be a report.
So, what is there, well, first of all, is it, what's the motion that's on the table?
I think the motion...
Add it to the agenda.
Right now, we're on the add to the agenda.
You know, I want to just make a couple, I guess, points about this. I know that there has been discussion about this, and there's interest on the part of members of council on the Standish House. I understand that. And I've made some public comments about my concern about the topic relative to existing agreements that, which are being looked at. And I voiced objection to the thought process that we would consider selling the Standish House and/or opening up a lease that's been drafted. That resulted in some comments, I think, from members of our public after a fairly strong response from the public in the first wave, that led this majority to believe that there was not impetus or thought that we should move forward with that. And I've said that publicly. But at the same time, I don't want to be perceived in the majority as stonewalling or blocking interest on the part of members of our council to look at this topic. But I will tell you that I think if we are going to entertain any kind of formal process through the council, it should be introduced in the proper way. And that would include a motion and an agenda item being presented to the majority in advance, allowing us to look at it, looking at the composition, the objectives of this ad hoc committee, if that's the proposal, and allowing, I guess, the majority to weigh in on it. And again, that's not a delay tactic, it's just, and I think that there's a perception, partly influenced by my comments publicly, of resistance to the thought of selling one of our properties. And I've made that comment publicly without hesitancy based on the public reaction. So with respect to this item being added to the agenda, my objection would be that we are being asked to do that on the fly, which, with no disrespect to the thought process that I think Stoffey is offering, I would object to doing it in that fashion. I would ask that the members of council who want to look at it, Mike, and Mike, and Stoffey, and anyone else for that matter, to formally present an agenda item to us in advance, let us look at it. And I would even tell you that, since no one from your group has approached me to talk about this, just so you know, I don't think I'm hard to reach, I don't think I'm hard to discuss matters with, I think, as chair of the council, it's a basic respect to reach out and say, "Here's something that we are still stuck on, we disagree with your position publicly, and we would like to further have discussion." Those are basics for me of respect, so that's part of my objection to it. So, what I would tell you again, is my preference would be to take a step back. If you, if you want this to be an ad hoc committee, that is either a part of an existing committee, or folded into an existing committee, or a separate body, let's have that discussion outside of council and present a formal document for review. Short of that, I would object to doing it on the fly, so I would, I would be opposed to doing it this evening.
I would add that if we're, it also doesn't give the public an opportunity to comment on it, 'cause it wasn't on the agenda, at least twenty-four hours in advance, so, you know, anybody can, any council with, I think any two council people can file a motion, so add it to the next agenda.
And, you know, just a comment, doing it as an ad hoc implies that folks weren't looking into the questions that were raised already, and I know people were looking into questions that had been raised prior, and that process was ongoing. So, I guess I would, I think we need, you know, time to sort out how this is done, is it a council or an ad hoc? But I do think raising it on the fly is not the way to do it.
So my response is that this is, you know, hardly on the fly, I mean, this has been talked about for several council meetings, and I brought it up. I wouldn't call that first wave of people that were opposed to it a wave at all. In fact, one is here that actually changed his mind after reviewing everything. So this has clearly been out in the public, and, you know, if you feel like it was disrespectful, Paul, you know, I'm sorry, but it was clearly out there. You didn't reach out to me, you dug in your heels and said you weren't even gonna look at it. This group is not considering whether to just sell it or not. There are three objectives that I laid out, and if alternatives meet those objectives, if at the end of the day, the decision is that it's not sold, it's not sold. But you have an experienced group of people who are volunteers in town, that have been on some important committees in town, and I've got full faith in them. So, I mean, I would, I would just continue on an ad hoc basis if you're not gonna consider... All we're talking about tonight is, just really, we need support from Jeff, so if there's anything that he couldn't provide to the general public, that we would have, we would be privy to some of that. I think everything that we, that he has is available, we might not need anything, but...
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, sorry. I think the decision to dedicate town resources any fashion to an initiative has to be, has to be done in a concert with, with the full council. That's the issue here. You're free to have an ad hoc committee without formal council support and no resources of the town, and explore it all you want, and then report back if you want to do that. There's no reason you can't do that. I heard about it last week, and I said, you know, "Free to meet." But if you want the resources of the town, if you want to look at or examine, or potentially look at and examine, the lease, the documentation, perhaps a legal opinion, perhaps Jeff's time looking at documentation, those are resources of the town that I think our residents have an obligation to weigh in on before we vote on something like that. Because we're asking, you know, to use their taxpayer dollars to look at a question. And, you know, I've objected to the topic based on public commentary that came out when it first surfaced, which, by the way, you weren't here for any of that, Stoffey, so I'm, I think it's a little difficult for you to comment on the public comment when you were here. No, I know, but I think the flavor, let me just finish. The flavor of what the public said in response to the initial wave was decisively...
By how many people?
I'm gonna say fourteen people spoke at that meeting, which is a pretty big...
Sounds like the same counting for our breakfast with the mayors.
What's that?
Go ahead.
The dialogue would be far more effective if you didn't throw stuff in like that, Stoffey. I'm reaching out to you to say, "If you want to pursue this, and you want this to be a council action, and you want the support of the town, I would recommend..." I won't support doing it on the fly, because I think our public has to weigh in on it if we're gonna create that. Every counselor, including Jerry, who's not here, should have an opportunity to look at an agenda proposal in advance, look at it, and weigh in on it. I'm not closing the door as chair of this council to the discussion. I'm saying that there's a process that should be followed for that, no different than any other agenda item that would be presented by a counselor. And I would also tell you that, since we've been in this seat, I've never not reached out to you guys on any topic, and it's, you're saying that, you know, I should be reaching out to you. I've made, made it clear, my feeling on this. If you, if you wish to pursue it further, and you have clearly indicated you wish to pursue it further, you are not satisfied with the position I've taken publicly on this that reflects what I think is the public sentiment, then I would tell you that we should have a discussion, be away from council, and craft the possibility of introducing the agenda, and let's have the discussion. You know, we're, this isn't the Ukraine. We're happy to have conversation with you guys if you want to reach out, but to come in on the fly, introduce something with no discussion, without reaching out to us in the majority, I'm gonna say again, I see that as disrespect. I wouldn't do that. We would never do that when you guys were in the majority. I would simply say, "Listen, I have something that's on my mind, let's discuss it. We want to move forward with this, this committee. Will you entertain it? Will you discuss it?" It's gotta pass through council. You've gotta get support for it if you want it to be something that's using the resources of the town. Right now, you don't have that. And I would tell you again, that making that decision in light of this, which I think there's a lot of sentiment in town, pro and con, and there's no doubt, I'm familiar with Rob Gary's points that he made publicly a few weeks ago. Rob is an informed and intelligent guy, have a lot of respect for the things he's done for this town. If he wants to participate, that would weigh in for me. But there may be six other people of equal quality and integrity who may say this is a bad use of our resources. So, if we're going to tie up our town resources, I want to hear that in response to an agenda that should be posted publicly and allow our residents to weigh in. There's sentiments from both sides. The prevailing sentiment that I heard when this came up was decisively negative, which is what led me to say, "I don't see," and we've discussed this in the majority, "Why would we pursue that? Opening up a lease discussion that's in place, opening up a possibility of selling an asset in the community that there doesn't appear to be sentiment for? Does that mean no discussion, cement walls up, I won't discuss it? Of course not. That's not how we operate." But I do expect there to be a process, and this isn't it. So, if you want to do a committee without council support, you're free to do that, of course. And you want to report back to it and let the council weigh in on it, that's option A. If you want the resources of the town, you want Jeff's participation, you want potential legal influence, get an agenda item in advance to us, let's discuss the format, the structure, who would be involved, how it would be reporting. It should be the council's prerogative to determine who the chair is, who's gonna be participating, what the composition is, whether it might fold into an existing body that we've already had discussions. All of that should happen. Those are just protocol. Those are common sense, reasonable, respectful protocol. I won't vote for it on the fly. That's not reasonable. It's not reasonable to our public. And that's not disrespecting, Stoffey, that you want to continue the topic. I, you know, we're elected officials who have an obligation to talk to each other. This is not the way to do it.
So, how are you defining town resources? 'Cause I thought I heard you say that...
Jeff, even Jeff or a staff member to have minutes. That's gonna require...
So how about existing copies of documents that are already in the file? Is that considered town resources?
Anybody can request that from the public at any time. That's not, that's not an issue. But I'm thinking, from what you've said and what Mike Rell said, that you would like some resources available to you to look at the question more thoroughly. And that would involve Jeff's opinion as town manager, not as a member of the community.
So is that the major stumbling block then? Just the resources?
No, it's not the major stumbling block, and I'm not saying I'm completely opposed to the idea, I'm just saying there should be dialogue about it. We should have an introduction, agenda item, and perhaps, given that this is something that's important to you, and you and I disagree on it at this point, we should have a discussion about it, so that you and I can say, "Okay, where do we want to go with this?" So we do this intelligently, and we reflect the sentiments of our community, we don't just go and do it on the fly because you don't like what I'm saying about it.
Well, I think this, I mean, I obviously have a different opinion, that I think the growing number of people are dwarfing the people that came out opposed to it, who were basically related to this particular facility. And I think there's a growing number of people that don't even realize we own the building in town, and that's why I'm doing it. And, you know, from what I'm hearing, I would just opt to continue as an ad hoc committee, and we will get the information we need. Otherwise, if you're willing to, to consider a town, a town committee, subject to the approval of any town resources being approved at a town council meeting, then that's fine. That would show, I think, some faith that, that you believe in what the committee's doing, but you'll have approval over using town resources.
You're confusing me. You're saying now you want to do the ad hoc...
Yeah, so we'll continue as an ad hoc committee, or make it a council committee meeting, or a town council meeting, or committee, subject to the approval of the council if town resources were to be used. That way, you protect using town resources, but you still allow the committee to continue.
Well, okay. Here's my reaction to that. I think we're obligated, as elected officials, especially since we're talking about a topic that has the attention of our public, and has been discussed publicly, reviewed publicly, covered by the press, and there are sentimental sentiments across both sides of the town, in my opinion, based on what we've seen and heard, emails and phone calls I've received, my opinion, it's heavily opposed to it. But that doesn't mean because of that... Stop. You have a different perception, that's fine. But you could pick any topic in this town, any topic, and if you put yourself out there saying, "I, my position on it is this," of course, people are gonna reach out and say, "I agree, Stoffey, you're a hundred percent right, the majority is all wet on this." Of course. Who's not gonna find that happening in any topic? But we sit here today in the majority and have to make decisions based on what we think our priorities are, and we've had this discussion, it isn't, this hasn't happened in a vacuum. We've had this conversation among the majority at least four times. Communication has gone back to the town manager. Jeff is fully aware of our position on it. And I have not approached government decision-making since we've been in office in November with a brick wall, "We will not talk, we will not discuss things, you know, the phone's not available, we're belligerent." That is not how we have operated this government. So, I will tell you that, if we're going to, I think, this topic is important enough and has enough tentacles legally and personally, and when you think about the stakeholders that have stepped up publicly to express concern, whether it be the Historic District, family members who deeded the property over, the Tourism Commission, the governing body for the Historic District, those people have to have a voice before I'm going to say, "Let's commit resources to it." But the topic is important enough, if we determine that's what should happen, based on conversation with the majority, that we should have that process follow some protocol that has historically always been in place in this town, that we don't just say, "I don't like that the majority is blocking, and I'm gonna form my own opinion and take my ball and go home." That's what I'm hearing. And I think that's a bad message for our community. You can choose to do that. I can't tell you, you can't meet with residents in town about a topic. But if you want this to be something that's endorsed, supported by the majority that's leading this town, I think it's a gesture of collaboration and bipartisan spirit to do it the right way. You choose. But I just think the right thing to do on this topic, given the sensitivity of it, and the amount of sentiment in the community that I've heard, is take a step back and either do it the formal process, or if you choose not to do it in the formal process, recognize that I have said, "I will not support using town resources and taxpayer dollars to examine the topic if it hasn't gone through the vetting process of this council." Otherwise, it's disrespectful to the majority, and it sends the message that, "We don't agree with the majority's position, so we're gonna go play ball somewhere else." That's like a parallel government, in that case, which I strongly object to. And I've said, I'm willing to have conversation about the topic, but it needs to go through, and no one's talked to me about it. I've expressed my concerns to the town manager based on what I've heard. I hear about this ad hoc thing coming up from the grassroots, no discussion with us, and we are in the majority. We get to make decisions about the agenda. We get to make decisions about yea or nay of town resources. That comes with the privilege of being in the majority, and we should be respected for that in the same way that we respected the majority the past four years. Those are basics in government for me. So, it's your choice. If you want it to be formal, I would tell you to come back with an agenda item. If you want to move without the formality, without the resources of the town, without tapping Jeff, secretarial support, legal support, resources of the town, be my guest. But I don't think it will have, it won't carry the kind of weight it could carry if we do it the right way. So we have a motion and a second in front of us as to adding this to the agenda.
I just, I just want to make one comment. My suggestion through you, Mr. Mayor, to Stoffey is, my suggestion is to remove your motion for now, make a formal presentation.
You've got some, you know, real good people that you want to have considered on this committee. My suggestion is, you make an arrangement through the mayor to get this added to the next agenda, where the public can come out to speak. Have those people you want on the committee here, so they can hear the views of all the people, and what their thoughts and their views are, so you have something to move forward with. And then the council can at that time determine whether to make it an official committee or not. That would be my suggestion to you. That way, you'll have a good perspective of what the people want, 'cause right now, you'd only get it from the people that are here. I think you gotta open it up to, that group can hear at once what everybody in town thinks. Give them a chance to come out and speak.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, so I'm, I guess I'm a little confused. If this was on the fly, I thought you said you had four meetings on it, so did you not know about it, or did you know about it?
Stoffey, don't contort what we're talking about here. You're coming forward, you're coming forward on the fly with an ad hoc committee. There's never been discussion among this body about an ad hoc committee to look at this question. What has come before this body on several occasions, and through infrastructure on several occasions, is a question about the resources of the town being spent on the Standish House, owned by the town, with a lease in place, and I have raised the question and the objection in response to infrastructure, and have had discussions with the majority about whether or not we want our resources to be devoted to reopening an existing lease... to reopening an existing lease and potentially sending a message to our community that leases are up for grabs. I've objected to that. I've said no to it. I've blocked it. I've said it publicly that I do not support reopening an existing lease that was crafted over several years, and by the way, voted on unanimously by a bipartisan group in 2008 on an existing property that we own. And I've communicated that position back on several occasions. What you're bringing up tonight is, we do not agree with that position, and we want to create an ad hoc committee to press the question further. So that is on the fly. That is not how that should be done. If you want that discussion to happen with council envoys, you can call me, you can reach out to me, you can send me a draft proposal to be added to the agenda. Let's have the dialogue, and let's show respect for the majority. If you want to do it without that and have all the meetings in the world till the cows come home, take Rob Gary's time until his hair falls off. But all I'm going to tell you is, if you want it to have respectability, integrity, and authenticity of this town, put it through the process that we do for everything else. Don't create a parallel government of your own.
There's a right way and a wrong way to do things, and this is not the right way.
It's your call.
I guess it is my call. So I mean, after that monologue, why would I ever bring it to you? If you just hear back what you just said over the last 20 minutes, why would I ever bring this to you?
Because you could put it on an agenda, and all the stakeholders could speak.
I'm telling you that there's a group here that we're not talking about just selling or just opening up a lease. This is a review of everything with different opinions. And just for full disclosure, I mean, this committee, including me, has two Republicans, two Democrats, and three unaffiliated people on it. And in the interest of further disclosure, the first two calls that I made were to the Historical Society and the family of, to the Standish, to Lee Standish. And they refused to participate. And I'm wondering if maybe you had any conversations with anybody at the Historical Society that might make them change their mind.
Well, you're always very good, Stathi, throwing out the little Molotov cocktail. But the fact of the matter is that your decision.
Talking about making, having minutes and having discussions and.
But you're spinning something that's not true, first of all. You're making an accusation that's not true, second of all. So you're tainting, you're tainting the ability to have a dialogue about this topic. So you're curdling the milk by approaching it that way. And again, we are in the majority. We have the ability in the majority to make a decision about what the agenda items are. That's the way it works. We get to yea or nay if something is going to come up or not come up as a priority. I have, you're saying, well, you've just, you've stated your position on all this. Why would I come forward with you if you, we have nine councilors that get to weigh in. I don't carry any more weight than anybody else, and I'm just as equally entitled to state my opinion publicly about this topic. But at the same time, my track record, not only in leadership, but as being on this council for nine years, has always been to hear all sides before I weigh in on a position. I have stated a position on this based on what I understand to be the sentiments of this community. I'm prepared to hear from the community. If it's different, I haven't seen that. But if you want to come forward and make a move to get this thing back opened up again and have discussion, there's a process, and we're not following it. So you can say, oh, it's already predetermined. I won't discuss it. There won't be any. That's not how we've operated. It's not how we've operated. There's nothing we've done in this council since we've been in office that is, anybody would say, oh, yeah, they're very belligerent. They don't have open discussion. They closed down the other side. They don't want to hear from the minority. You don't have a single piece of evidence to show that to be true in the way that we've conducted ourselves. You've decided that you don't like that I've not been in agreement on you, so you won't reach out and find out how we can have that dialogue. But you want to create, you know, a parallel organization to do it without the support of the council. You can't have it both ways. If you want it to be supported and have legitimacy, then let's put it through the process and let all councilors weigh in, let the public weigh in. And if the sentiment from the community is such that, yeah, you know what? You missed us in the majority. Stathi's right. There's tons of sentiment in the community to open this thing back up. But just bear in mind, we're talking about legal expense, existing leases, property that's owned by the town, that has long historic significance, and all the sentiments that were communicated here publicly in our council chambers in response to this topic that led me to believe in the majority to agree that the sentiment wasn't there for it. Does that mean that there's no discussion? We won't go back? We're closed-minded? No. It says that if you want to come back and have some more discussion, you don't think we've heard it properly, pick up the phone, send me an email, say, let's have a coffee. Let's talk about it. We want to introduce it again. That's the right way to do it, in my opinion. That's the way I would support it. And I can tell you that if you make the presentation and the sentiment is there, and the community, along with our majority, and this council says, let's have that dialogue, maybe it has to go through infrastructure. We have stuff in place to discuss any topic area, whether it's the lease, how it was signed, was it signed properly, all the stuff that we're seeing circulate in the public. We have a structure in place. And if these members of the community that you've solicited to participate are interested in participating in something, there's a lot of ways to do it.
So let me bring up some information, some relevant information about this current infrastructure that we have, including the infrastructure committee. It was brought up in that infrastructure committee. I'm on the infrastructure committee. Tony's the chair, and he wisely said, let's look at this thing. But then, lo and behold, the next morning, it was shut down by you.
That's correct.
Yeah. So again, why, after this 20-minute of dialogue and claiming that there's some process or infrastructure that's open, I mean, you've just proven that it's not.
Stathi, the question that came before infrastructure back after the election that Tony raised with me after the infrastructure meeting was whether or not it was appropriate to devote legal resources to look at whether or not there was a way out of the lease. That's what came back to me as one topic area, along with the question as to whether or not it was prudent for the town to continue to own Standish House. Those were the two topics that came up through infrastructure. And I had a conversation with our town manager both before the election and after the election about the fact that I did not agree that we should do that, that I did not agree as the mayor that town resources and legal fees should be devoted to visiting and opening up a lease that in my mind was ironclad signed and devoted properly several years ago. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that former Mayor Hemmend and former councillor Cassio, former deputy mayor, council were involved and voted for this thing back in '08 unanimously. So it was my opinion that we should not devote our taxes to that resource, to opening that up, because I felt that it was not in the best interest of the town to send a message that a lease that had been signed can be revisited based on the new political wind of the day. Does that mean that we can't have that discussion as a council separately? No, it doesn't. But that was my response to it at the time, and I directed Jeff not to devote legal resources to it as the mayor, which I think is my prerogative. And I don't know that Jeff agrees or disagrees with me, but he was respectful enough to say, hey, that's your position. That's fine. I'm going to go back. And by the way, Tony called you and told you that was my position, and you said, I understand. I'm not surprised. So there was no mystery here that we were hiding it behind the scenes. It was a stated position, and it got stated publicly again. I'm only one person on this council. The topic continues to be pressed. Members of the public who agree with you have come out. There's, again, this is not the Ukraine. If the public wants to come out in a wave and say, no, you guys missed it, those 12 people who came out, who represent large bodies of people that raised the sentiment when you weren't here, Stathi, that were unanimously opposed to it, not a single speaker came here and spoke in favor of it, which for me reinforced as the majority that the sentiment is not there. That reinforced my position. The sentiment's not there. You're saying you're hearing from a wave of people that we're all wet on this. Okay. Post it as a public agenda item. Post your proposal publicly. Let's have the dialogue. Let's hear what they have to say. And there's nothing in our track record that says that we won't be open-minded about hearing from the public again. Nothing, nothing, nothing that you can point to that says this is a closed-minded majority. They won't entertain it. But I don't like this process. I don't like this approach. It sends the wrong message. I said it for the third time. It's disrespectful to the majority. So it's your call. I urge you to go back and think about it. I urge you to think about doing it differently.
Okay. So my call is going to be to continue as an ad hoc committee, and if at the next council meeting, the group decides we want to present it to the council, we'll do so.
Okay. So are you removing your agenda? Withdrawing it?
Drawing my motion.
I'll draw the second.
Thank you. Any other council comment?
I would just note, unfortunately, I was out of state for work at the Budget Committee, at the Budget hearing. And I regret that, but I had to be away. But I did read the minutes in detail, so I read about all the folks who took the time to come out and comment. So I appreciate that, and I think I was the only council member who was away for that. But I think I'm thoroughly immersed in what occurred and what was said at that meeting, and we'll take that into account when we go through the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a, Kathy Bagley asked me to remind everyone, on May 31st at Cove Park, there'll be fireworks. Food and fun will be available starting at 5:00 PM. Families can come and picnic at Cove Park and then wait for the fireworks after dark.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate that. Point of privilege for the chair, just want to share that Dolores Osano, who is our town clerk, her mom passed away this week. There is a service tomorrow, I believe, at Corpus Christi after a 9:30 wake at the Sopos at Follybrook. There is an obituary in the paper, and on behalf of our clerk, direct members of the public who know Dolores and/or her family members, to take a look at that. I'm sure members of the council will attend.
Rose Gigliardi?
Yes, thank you, Jeff. Rose Gigliardi is the obituary name of Dolores's mom, who, by the way, was 103, which, that's an impressive, impressive thing, even though we obviously feel bad for Dolores and her family. Okay, we are going to move on to council action. B, 1A, acceptance of resignations from boards and commissions. Donna?
Hold on. From the Library Board, Penny Stanzi-Ali, the term was 4/20, effective 4/2014. Youth Advisory Board, Penny Stanzi-Ali, effective 4/202014. Personnel Appeals Board, Joe Koneski, effective 4/252014. And the Shade Tree Commission, Joe Koneski, effective 4/2514.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, abstentions? I'm sure we'll send notes, Jeff, to those folks. We have a resignation, Deputy Mayor.
From the Library Board of Directors, Stephanie McKenna, 66 Harding Street, effective 5/42014.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Tony. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? And finally, Donna, an appointment to a board and commission?
Appointment to the Central Connecticut Health District, Paul T. Clunin, of 668 Ridge Road, from 5/514 to 6/302016, and it's to fill a vacancy.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you. We have no unfinished business. We're going to move on to B for A, word of bid pool chemicals for the 2014 pool season. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the purchase of pool chemicals as requested for $31,500 based upon bids conducted by the Capital Region Council of Governments.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is annual expense budgeted in the Park and Rec Fund just for the chemicals for the pools. And as the motion says, these are bid out through the Capital Region Council of Governments as they're purchasing pool.
How did this compare to our budget, Jeff?
We're spending what we budgeted.
Beautiful. Any concerns, questions, observations? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Motion passes. For B, a word of bid for the elevators at the Weatherfield High School renovation, do I have a motion?
Motion to accept the bid of Baystate Elevator for $205,790.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This evening, we have the bid results for the elevators for the high school innovation project. Laurel Purcell with ONG is here to answer any questions, but these are the holeless hydraulic elevators that we've been talking about, and they have come in under the bid amount or under the budget amount. And the planning, Building Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for Laurel, since she's here?
Yep.
Mike, go ahead.
I must have missed the council meeting. We discussed it.
Just switch over from the hydraulic to the flat?
Yeah. What's the difference between the hydraulic?
Laurel, why don't you come up and just refresh our memory on that? Thank you for coming. We just made your attendance worthwhile.
I want to see.
Thanks for asking, Mike.
Is it, is it a cheap way out, or that's what I?
No, I'll let her address it.
Are we taking a risk with new technology?
It's not, it's not a new technology. It's the same elevator, electric traction, just a new way of how they do it. It's, it's a holeless hydraulic. In other words, it doesn't require a machine room. It actually puts the components of the actual motor, the elevator motor, is in the shaft of the elevator, so it actually eliminates the use of having to have a machine room. So that helps with space inside the school. We don't have to build a closet for it anymore. And this is the same type of elevator that's been around for a long time. Each of the manufacturers, the main elevator manufacturers, Otis makes this elevator. It's called a hydrofit. Baystate is actually a ThyssenKrupp elevator, and Kone also has this type of technology as well. So it's, it's just a different technology. It's the same type of elevators.
Does it cost more for maintenance of this type?
No, it's actually cheaper to run. It's more energy efficient to run this than the electric traction.
What was this under, ballpark under the budget in our original?
The budget amount that we were carrying for the elevator was 309,000.
Free 09?
309,000, yes.
Okay, so about 60,000.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Mike? We'll let you take the first, right?
The first, I noticed there was alternate 17A, 17B. Well, I couldn't tell from the chart what that, what the alternates were.
The base bid was the originally specified electric traction elevator, and what we wanted to do was, instead of changing the base bid just to make it holeless hydraulic, we gave them the option of giving both prices. So the other two bidders didn't propose the cheaper prices for the other, for that option. So it's just, it was an option to give them for pricing.
Oh, okay. Okay. So they, these guys did, but because we're below, so far below budget, we're fine with the 259.
Correct. Well, yeah, and, and you're actually better off with a 205.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mike?
It's not a question, it's just more of a statement. I, I do like the fact that we went with Otis Elevator, a Connecticut company, subsidiary of UTC, I believe.
Otis, they're, they're not being worth the bid. Bay State's going to be-
It will be Bay State?
Yes.
Oh, okay. They were the 305, was Otis?
Otis was actually the highest, yes. And again, Bay-
No, no. No concerns. Neighbors to the north, I would, okay, well, I will rescind that.
Yeah. Bay State is the rep for ThyssenKrupp.
And not from New York?
No.
Oh. Okay. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Other points? We have a motion, a second in front of us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Thank you, Laurel, appreciate it. Finally, for C, award of a bid for the replacement of eight emergency generators.
Motion award the Weatherfield generator replacement project to Custom Electronic or Electric?
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The town, through hard work of physical services, engineering, emergency management, put together a grant proposal for replacement of eight emergency generators at various town facilities. We were awarded the grant, and we have spent some time on the architectural and electrical and mechanical design, and have bid out the project. The bid came in very favorable to us for those eight facilities, and we recommend taking the bid of eight, $387,700 from Custom Electric. And Sally's here and answering any questions you may have.
Questions for Sally or the Town Manager? Mike? How are you, Sally? Good.
It looks like they have two choices to give us either Detroit diesel or Kohler generators?
Yes, we do.
Are either of them worse off than the other?
No, they're, they are comparable. We have given our recommendation for the Atlantic Detroit Diesel, and they feel that there's no problem with being able to access them.
Okay, so you gave the recommendation for them to, okay. That was all I had.
Thanks. Any other questions for Sally? Jeff?
Yeah, just Sally, all these facilities currently have generators, or some do and some don't?
They do. We are changing a couple of them. The generator right now at the nature center, the nature center, part of the process was to be able to turn the nature center into a shelter for people who want to bring their animals, because that was an issue that we found the last time we needed to open a shelter. So that changed the way that the nature center generator would need to be sized and placed. We also found during our investigation that the generator at the town garage was undersized and really does not function throughout the entire building, so that needed to be changed. And so there were these minor, well, not minor, there were these changes that caused the size of the generators to be increased.
Okay, for those two? The other six are pretty much the same?
Pretty comparable.
Okay. All right, great.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second in front of us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Thank you, Sally.
Thank you.
For D, extension of the town building cleaning contract?
Motion to extend the contract between Capital Cleaners and the town of Weatherfield for one year at the current year's pricing?
Second. Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. We bid this last year, and the, the cleaning company that we believe everybody's satisfied with is asking to renew with current year pricing, and we'd recommend doing so. They've done a very good job, they're very familiar with the buildings, and we'd recommend you extend it.
Thank you, Jeff. Thanks for the work on that as well. Any questions about that, from anybody? Good, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you. We have no ordinance and resolutions for introduction, and we have the minutes, approval of the minutes, first March 17th, 2014. Motion?
Motion approve the minutes of March 17th, 2014?
Second. Corrections, address, questions, anything? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention? April 7th meeting minutes? Motion, please?
Motion to accept the minutes of April 7th, 2014?
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any changes, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions?
Abstain. I think, I'm trying to find the first page. I'm not sure if I was there that day.
I, I, I think you're correct in abstaining, Tom. The April 12th meeting, special meeting?
I was there?
You were there, Scott.
Oh, the 12th? Oh, no, the 7th. 7th.
Oh, yeah, it says you were there. You were there. I was there then. So I approve.
You retract your abstention?
Yeah.
Okay. Back to the April 12th meeting. That was the special meeting. Okay.
Motion approve the minutes of April 12th, 2014?
Have a second?
Second.
Any changes, additions? Just one comment about that, in response to the public comment about that. I spoke briefly with the Town Manager about that meeting. You'll recall, Council, that that was a half, three-quarter day on the, on the budget that we had at the fireside lounge over at the community center. And different from our normal meetings for council, obviously that lengthy meeting on a weekend, I think part of it is a cost recognition of bringing in the town clerk, whatever, the summary there. But with respect to the public comment on it, I would suggest to any, any member of the public who's interested in getting additional information on it, I'm happy to provide some little, little bit more detail, looking back at what we covered that day. I think it's a cost savings for us not to have a staff member tied up all day with details, but the point was well taken by the member of the community, so we can follow up with that. All those in favor? Yes, I'm sorry, Mike.
Just to follow up with that, just because I wasn't there at the meeting, would there be a, a way that we could record some of these meetings?
Sure.
We could look into that. I know with digital recording now, you don't have to have an audio cassette anymore, and I don't believe there would be too much cost into doing something like that.
Yeah, especially at a special meeting when we're, you know, we're not-
Right. And maybe we don't even need anybody to transcribe the minutes, but it-
Available to the public.
Make it available to the public.
Yep, good point. Thanks, Mike. All those, any favor of the minutes, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Abstain. Abstain.
Thank you. The April 21st regular meeting?
Motion approve the minutes of April 21st, 2014?
Second.
Thank you. Any additions or changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Abstain.
Thank you, Jeff. And finally, the April 24th special meeting with the Board of Education?
Motion approve the minutes of April 24, 2014?
Second.
Thank you. Changes, additions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention? Public comments? David?
Well, Dave Kirk, 149 Rogers. That was an interesting back and forth with the conversation about the Standish House, and I'd like to say first of all, that I haven't been here in a while, and I support the mayor's position on the Standish House, that it is a historic home, and once you lose it, you never get it back. So, so I, I don't agree about the, the money, you know, how much we can make here or there, how many pennies. You know, if you lose the Standish House, you're never getting it back. And you have to look at long-term consequences here. Despite that, I, I will tell you, I watched the town council on TV for a while, and I'm happy to see that Mr. Rel, Councilor Rel, my neighbor down the street, has shown some, some chutzpah there, and took a position that was a, a bold move, and even though he withdrew it with aid and support of his colleagues, I admire that. When, when I was in college, I was on the student council, and I took some bold positions before, and I was in the minority. And sometimes I lost, sometimes I won, but, you know, it's admirer, it's admirable to, to stand up for what you believe. So I give you credit for that, even though I don't really agree with you, but I, I admire you for, for speaking up, and I wish you spoke up more, because sometimes I think you're kind of quiet. But I know you're new to the board, but, um, that, that was the main issue I was planning on speaking on. You know, you, you guys spoke about it a lot, and I was looking at my watch, and I was, I was saying, you guys should finish. You know, you kind of prolonged that conversation a little bit long. But like I said in the beginning, like Paul said, you can't give up historic properties, because once you give it up, you know, it's gone forever. So, thanks a lot.
Mr. Rue?
George A. Rue, 956 Corvadale Circle. First thing, I wish you guys would speak a little more into these mics. You know, yet to be my age, sometimes that hearing part doesn't work all that well, you know, and it's tough to follow up mumbling around, and I don't start pointing at anybody. The, the discourse and the conversation really was very interesting, and I have no position on the Standish House at all at this particular moment. What I did notice, however, and when Stasas first mentioned ad hoc committee, like a bunch of citizens up there raising a little cane, I thought, gee, that's not a bad idea. But where I got lost, where I had to say, uh-uh, is when we started to want to tap into town resources. I didn't use that term, but to get the manager involved in this, this would be like the taxpayers' association, of which we really still have one. I'm part of it, and Bob Young's part of it, and a few other people that are still alive are part of it. Like we said, we want to have a meeting, we want the manager to be part of our committee. I don't think that should fly. That's not such a good idea. But in any event, I just wanted to share that thought with you. The ad hoc committee, be my guest. And if the, if the citizenry come up here, don't make your presentation in front of the Board of Education, because they'll only give you five minutes. So do it here, and you, we, I'm sure you'll be able to get across. Just a couple of things on the bids. I wish you'd list the dollar values on the, on the, on the agenda. There's not a single item had a dollar sign behind it, and one of the ones on the last one on the building contract was at the current price. I never heard of price. So, I mean, as, as you get the agenda, that ought to be on there. One other thing on the, it came up here-
It's online.
On the, the minutes, Mike mentioned that can you, there was that special meeting, can you get the disc? And I had a similar problem, and I tried to get the discs, although I did get a lot of cooperation from both Jeff and from the people that are making the disc for the, for the charter revision. Years ago, well, it wasn't 100 years ago, but it was fair, it was prior to the time we had nice television stuff here. You used to be able to go into the, into the library and borrow a videotape of all of the council meetings, and you could sign it out, and you could go home, stick it in your recorder and watch it, and then return it. If you didn't return it, you had to pay a fine. And one of the thoughts that I had, and I didn't like having to pay $5 to get a disc of the Charter Review Commission meeting, not that the $5 made much difference in my life, it didn't, but it was just the kind of a thing that irritated me. And again, all of your meetings perhaps ought to be on a CD disc with digital recorders, and I don't know exactly what they are, except digital is different than something else, but, you know, that all came into life after my engineering education was completed. But those things could, in my judgment, might be even available at the library. If people check it out and want to listen, fine. If they don't want to bother, fine, too. Doesn't cost all that much, okay? So, other than that, thank you.
Thank you, George. Gus?
May I make a quick comment? All town council meetings, George, are put on the Weatherfield Community Television website. You can, you can view them.
I know, I know that. I'm thinking of the, for example, Charter Review Commission-
Okay.
And as Jeff mentioned, there was this special meeting. And, and again, if you've got, if you're recording something, and you can make it available to the town, it'd be fine. I never have run for council or the board that I even get it online or on, I watch it all. It's often watching it here live.
Thank you, Gus.
Good evening again. Gus Colantonio, 16 Morrison Avenue. I think it's kind of nice, you know, the cleaning people, they're still working for the same prices last year, and yet the President Obama wants to narrow the difference of what people make on the lower end of the scale versus the top. But this way, I think, like, you know, it's getting bigger and bigger. The town employees get more, and the cleaning people don't get anything. Probably we should talk to them, see what they're doing right, that they can do such thing. Anyway, what I'm here for about the stop signs, because I'm not going to go away, it is sad and frustrating that last year I paid $6,862, $6,862 for property taxes, and yet I cannot get a stop sign where it is warranted by Connecticut standards, and yet some streets have multiple stop signs where, as stated on previous occasion by the town manager, the stop signs are not needed or warranted. Hillcrest Avenue and Morrison Avenue are two streets in town that are parallel and adjacent to each other. Both connect to two major streets. Hillcrest Avenue always connected to the major streets. Morrison Avenue was constructed originally as a non-true street, was never meant to connect to Silas Dean, but changed in 1955 when the town, for some unknown reason, connected Morrison Avenue to Silas Dean. On previous occasions, I have told you that Hillcrest Avenue meets all the town road standards, and Morrison Avenue does not, so I will spare the time and I will not repeat myself. I've said that before, I guess. The town has taken measurements for the intersectional side distance for Orchard at Hillcrest, and found to be 344 feet to the east and 970 feet to the west, and as such, stop signs are not needed at this location, as stated by the town manager before, too. I agree with that. The town has also taken measurements for the intersectional side distance for Orchard Street and Morrison Avenue, and found to be 290 feet. Keep this measurement in mind. The intersectional side distance for Tipton Road and Morrison Avenue, as measured by the town again, is 232 feet to the west, 290 versus 232. Now, let me quote again the police report dated May 21st, 2009. Now we are in 2014. This is the police report. The stop sign for westbound traffic on Morrison Avenue and Orchard Street are necessary, is necessary because of a sightline restriction when on Orchard Street. I found that when driving south on Orchard Street, it is difficult to see westbound cars because of a fence at 6 Orchard Street and the grade of the road on Morrison Avenue just west of Orchard, end quote. 290 feet distance requires a stop sign in an upgrade direction. The grade between Tipton Road and Orchard is about 6% by the way. And 232 feet, 20% less of the distance, in a downgrade from Tipton and Morrison, does not require a stop sign. Now, I may ask, the police department, do they have any credentials, I guess, that they can make a decision when you need a stop sign or not? I did go to school for four years to become an engineer, and then I had to practice for four years before I became a professional engineer. I don't think the police department requires to take engineering courses, so they should not make the judgment if we need a stop sign or not. Where is the logic? I do not understand why the installation of a stop sign is against the law, as previously said by the town manager. I say it is against the law not to have a stop sign where needed by state standards. The town manager has stated that the stop sign and Hillcrest Avenue are not needed. Then why are they still there? Why? Now, let me make a statement to the council, again, to you guys. The fact that the town employees have not done anything about this situation does not surprise me at all. They're not accountable for anything. The employees, but the council should care about the concerns and the well-being of all the residents. Over the years that I have been complaining about this situation, the council has not said anything at all. After the election, I gave the same speech regarding the safety of the street, hoping that the new council will do something about it, not even a word. Thank you for the nuance. I guess the safety of the street in town is not on their agenda. I'm going to ask again, if any of you lived on Morrison Avenue, would the town install a stop sign? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gus. Rob?
Robert Gary, 10 Morrison Avenue. I'm not here to talk about the Demon Standish House or stop sign on my street. That's been covered. So, speaking as President of the Village, Weatherfield Village Improvement Association, 150 Morrison Avenue, just to thank you to the town again for another great Arbor Day celebration. And as you probably all know, our Arbor Day celebration that's run by the Village Improvement Association is one of the components that's required to receive our continuing Tree City USA designation, so, and so that George A. Rue knows it was not personal. The reason that there were six trees planted on the Broad Street Green this year, two were donated by the association, and four were purchased by CLMP to replace some badly damaged trees, we'll call pruned trees, so. But we did, so everyone knows, plant a new elm tree at the site of the original elm tree this year as well. We, the tree warden felt that the current disease-resistant elm trees would, would survive, so we planted one there. And we're also replacing, at some point this year, the plaque that was stolen off the, off the stone there that marks the original elm tree, or is dedicated to the original elm tree, so. And just while I'm here, another pat on the back, we have spent several years donating crab apple trees to Cumberland Avenue between Salfordstein Highway and Wilka Hill Road, so that tree scape is pretty much complete. And since it should be in bloom just around now, make sure you take a look at that, because it's pretty remarkable. take a look at that because it's pretty remarkable. So thank you to Councilor Kotkin who came and did the Arbor Day proclamation and to Kathy Bagley and to Phil Smithwick and the tree team, tree crew as well as every year. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Bob?
Good evening again. Robert, end of Copper Mill Road. Mr. Rue was talking about the tree that fell down near his home and he, he mentioned that there were several people that got killed from falling trees. I believe I was reading some time ago that on the Merritt Parkway, there also was another, a car going in whatever direction it was where the tree fell and killed the passenger and the driver. And the child was in the backseat. So that, that had to be a pretty duh, ugly situation where, when that happened and of course, like I said, the child was in the backseat and watched it all happen and, you know, watched her parents perish right there. And that has set off the state of Connecticut to, even though they're bankrupt and they have no money, they have had to go out and cut trees down no matter what. And if you notice, ninety-one seems to be pretty well butchered from the trees and other places and other highways as well, but that's because of that reason, per my understanding. This evening, there was some mention about people complaining about wasting money on education. I don't think we're wasting money on education. I think the money we're putting into education is being wasted. We're not getting any results for the last thirteen years. We have seen our test scores for our CAP tests and our CMTs and our CM, CMTs and CAPTs just stagnant. Year after year, our spending has not decreased. Our spending has not been flat. Our spending has been going up. Yet the results that we've gotten from our students, thanks to our education system, have been flat. And in the last year, we've saw, saw it go down. Six years ago, we, as a town, were rated on the average for our average class, average test scores against all the other hundred and fifty, sixty towns that have schools. Six years ago, we were like seventy-five, seventy-three. Today, we're a hundred and twelve. We keep getting pushed down because our school system is not delivering. Yet, year after year, our town council keeps giving them more and more money. So we're just throwing money away. Call it waste, I don't care what you call it, but we're not, as citizens, as taxpayers, we're getting less and less value year after year because our administration, school administration, is not getting results. The results just keep dwindling away. So, talk about wasting money? Talk about we're not getting results? I don't care how it's put, but we're not getting the results for all the money we're putting into it. And you folks have been giving them more and more money year after year and they're not, they're not accountable. If you were, if this was a corporation and the boss was looking at production going down, he'd be closing it down, that line or that area of work. He'd be cutting back. He'd be getting new people. And I know they got a whole bunch of new people, but the results still have not increased. So, we also had some other discussions, a pretty, pretty good discussion on the Standish House. And what I don't understand is, we can't give up a historic building. If we have, my understanding is that building at some point was used as the Board of Education headquarters. At least that's what I've been told. Yet we gave it up. We have no use for it. And now to give it to another organization on a fifty-year lease at a hundred dollars a year and we pick up the main, ninety-nine percent of the cost, and I, I don't mind saying ninety-nine percent of the cost because they're only paying three, per the lease, they have four properties or four properties and they're only, their liability is only three thousand dollars. We pick up everything beyond that. We pick up the snow plowing, we pick up the, the, the clipping of the grass, we pick up insurance, we pick up, oh, there was a fire at the Kinney Center some, a couple of years ago, and I'm sure we picked up all of that cost. Why do we continue to own property like that? We don't need it. Give it back to the people who had it before. Or sell it to the Historic Society. Let them become home, property owners just like the rest of us. Maybe, and let them take care of their property. I don't know what the arrangement is with those old buildings across the street from the Standish House. It's like the Silas Dean House and the Stevens House. I don't know what that arrangement is at all. Whether those people take care of it theirself, whether we go in there and take care of it. I, I don't know. But we shouldn't. It's a private organization. It's just like Historic Society is a private organization. We have no business sending tax dollars in there to take care of their property. And I would urge you to do something about it. And I understand there's a lot of financial problems going on with this leasing that we have and, that they have in there. And, and you know, the problem that they have is their investment into this property is so extremely small. Hundred dollars a year, three thousand dollars max among four properties. That's their, that's their, that's, that's their investment. If they don't get their rent this month, well, so what? What are they going to lose? Some funding money? Because that's really all it's about, is giving them funding money. And we're the ones, if we own the building, we should be collecting the forty thousand dollars a year from a restaurant owner, not somebody else. On another note-
Mr. Young, could you wrap up?
On another note, sir. I know, and I disagree with buying another fire engine. And I know that the manager has mentioned that, that the current fire engine will be sold. I was at an auction this weekend and they had a fire engine from the town of Canton. Regular kind of fire engine. It sold at auction, had thirty-seven thousand miles on it, which is probably close to what the one you have that you're going to be getting rid of. And it sold for eight thousand dollars. What a bargain. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Other public comment? Seeing that we are going to move into executive session and then we'll return for a budget discussion publicly, which-
I had a question on the agenda.
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
Could we move the budget first so that we don't lose the people here? If we go into executive session, everybody's going to leave, I guarantee you.
Well, I just, no, because I have Morris here on the clock and I want to take, he's been here presently for an hour. So I want to do that, which should be relatively brief. So I'm going to move into executive session. Can I get a motion to?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We'll be brief.